Of Thanksgiving, we do want to take a moment just to acknowledge the thanks that we give to you in all things because you are the giver of life, you are the giver of breath, you are our sustainer, our provider, our redeemer. Father, you are, all good things come from you, and for that, we give you thanks. We give you thanks every single day, but especially, Father, during this season of Thanksgiving. I pray for each family that is represented here today. Father, I pray as they prepare to gather with loved ones that they will find peace in their spirit because, God, we know that sometimes it can get tough with families. Our hearts can be hurt the most by our families, Father, and that was not what your intention was, but that is what we have created here on earth, and I pray peace over every single family that gathers this week. I pray peace over every single person who will not have that mother or father at the table, who will not have that child at the table, who will not have that spouse at their table this year. Father, it is so hard on the spirit, on the emotion, God, and we are, we are human and we need you. We need you to be all things to us because no one else can be, Father, so we thank you and we honor you and we lean on you, we love you, we need you to continue to lift us up and give, as we give thanks in all things this week, in Jesus' name, amen.
Beautiful prayer. Beautiful. Thank you.
Good morning. Today, we will hear from our manager of public affairs, Ken Ward, Dr. Stewart with Friends of the Theater, and President Laurie Will and Vice President Bill Ford with the Museum of Fine Arts. Items that will be considered in the formal session are resolution authorizing the renovation, financing, and leasing of property located at 3030 Mobile Highway for use by the Alabama Department of Human Resources. Consider a resolution to call a special election for renewal of school tax. Consider a resolution approving the 2024 severe weather preparedness tax holiday, February 23rd through 25th, 2024. Consider a resolution authorizing the county's Thanksgiving holiday observance on Friday, November 24th. Consider a three-year contract with Debtbook for lease and subscription management software. Consider lease renewal with Burford Plantation for the rental of storage space for voting equipment. Consider the 2024 commission meeting schedule. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
$2,000 to Chretz High, a J D, high for the thespian group, that's head for Shakespeare. They just have a brand new test and group and we're going to get a bunch of brand new actors for local community here hopefully pretty soon.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
The Lacy Board, New Year's Day Parade, $2,000. Chi Etta Phi Nursing Sorority. Chi Etta Phi, I'll spell it. Just C-H-I-E-T-A-P-H-I Nursing Sorority, $2,000.
Florence, we do have a couple of joint. Has anybody else got any individuals?
Yeah, one more, please. Brantwood Children Home, $1,000.
I'm sorry, where?
Brant, Brantwood.
Oh, okay.
And Mental Health America, $500.
Florence, we have a couple of joint ones. Montgomery Botanical Garden at Oak Park, they've asked for funding. Of course, we don't have any in the joint, so it all had to be individual. Back in March, there was $5,000 from the joint, and then Commissioners Harris, Walker gave $2,500, and Mord Ziegler gave $5,000. So that's, they're asking again for. Yes, sir.
I think their request was $50,000?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to suggest that we do $5,000 apiece, and then at first of the year, do the other $25,000 from donated. And then go back to agency and put me down for $5,000 for the botanical garden at Oak Park from my agency.
Anybody else want to participate?
Me, also, agency, same amount.
I'm fine to do $5,000 from my agency. I'm going to need to talk to them to see the full $50. Normally, I feel like we've done 25 in the past.
In the past, we, the most we've ever done was $5,000 from the joint.
She said, she sent an email. I pass it on to everybody, it has all the things, all the new things that she, she wanted to do with it.
But now, I'm good to go ahead and get $5,000 from my agency now.
Tyler Davis wanted to say.
The batteries for the.
Batteries, man. We all received the information from Manhood Incorporated about the batteries for the transportation for the, the young gentleman. I pulled that email.
James Lovejoy.
Yeah.
Mineral Club.
Florence, on that botanical garden, I'll do five from agency, too.
From agency?
Yes, ma'am. Like everybody else, make it something.
Can it?
Oh, no, I can't.
And how, he asked for $3,000 from the county commission or anybody, is anybody, no Dan said he's willing to split it?
Well, he's asked, also asked the city for the same $3,000. I don't know what the city did now.
I did $500 a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, well, I will do five, Dan, you do five.
I'll do five.
All right, is this out of?
Agency. To Manhood Incorporated.
There's a bunch of queues on that council, they'll give them a lot of money.
We also have Mrs. Doris Crenshaw had asked for the Rosa Parks Celebration for the Southern.
For $20,000.
Youth Leadership, she had asked for $40,000. The most we've ever given before has ranged from 10 to 20, I believe.
Which one was it?
The, Ms. Crenshaw, she's sent it to us.
Southern Youth, she's asked for different things, sometimes it's a trip, take students to Washington, and her quest this time was for the Rosa Parks Gala. They did it last year, if anybody wants to participate in that.
Haven't we always helped them out of?
We always helped them, I thought we helped them out of desert, joint.
We have in the past, but it was always requested toward a summer trip, so this is a little bit late in the year.
Do, um.
Money's not going to be there till the first of the year.
If it's, if, that's still a if, though, so.
So it's a if.
There's no, never guaranteed.
Yeah, that's a if. I want to go back to, I hate to see again, $1,000 for Carriage Hills Homeowners Association.
Ms. Tim.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I have a question, just for clarification regarding the resolution to extend the school tax. On the, that initial legislation, what, 20 years ago, it said that 200 signatures were required, is that necessary for the extension of this resolution? Do we have, do we have the 200 signatures?
Yes, sir, I believe.
That's not us. The school board has to do that.
Is that?
Right, but they submitted those to the Election Center and verified that those persons whose signatures were included were registered voters.
Okay.
I believe that's correct. Judge Love? Well, I just.
What was the, what was the question?
That he was inquiring about the 200 signatures required for the school tax renewal, and that I've said that I believe those were submitted to the Election Center.
Oh, I think it's over at the Registrar's Office.
I'm sorry.
Oh, the Registrar, the Board of Registrar, I think they were submitted to the Board of Registrars, and they're trying to verify the signatures to make sure that everyone's registered voters, and then at that point in time, it will come across the hallway to us to, I guess, look at putting it on the ballot for March.
Right, I'm sorry, it was the Board of Registrar, not the Election Center. But yes, they were submitted and verified.
And that initial legislation was for a 20-year period?
Correct.
And this is for 30 years? Is that any, any conflict concerning that? Okay.
The authorizing statute allows 30 years.
Just wanted some clarification. Thank you, thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
Florence.
Florence, I have another agency, if we could dip back, please. I need to do 500 from agency to Leadership Montgomery for Father Purcell.
And I need to do 3500 from agency to that. I mean, my other county commissions would like to join in donating to Leadership Montgomery to redoing Father Purcell.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, that's, that's new to this body, isn't it?
Yeah, we're redoing.
Father Purcell.
They're redoing the gathering, redoing the gathering room for the parents and the kids.
Where is Father Purcell? Look at Sherden Heights?
No, it's right there on the corner of Fabu in, oh, St. June, right there, Fabu on Oak Street.
Oh, St. June, okay.
And that's a Leadership Montgomery project.
It is a Leadership Montgomery, North Street project, yes.
Oh, you're in that class, all right.
And came right to your district.
That's your project.
We sure appreciate that. $1,000 from designated. We need all the help we can get.
Are you lifting it up, Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
And so that would be $1,000 from your designated revenue to Leadership Montgomery?
Yes, if there's anything left.
That's my problem.
A little bit.
Money is love. Doug, can I get five from you?
Well, I've, every year, I've supported a project.
Can you support?
I'm going to get another one from another, because we have a couple of other county employees, I think, that's involved in Leadership.
What about, what about me, Doug?
I ain't worried about you, you got your own money.
Thanks, Isaiah and Rhonda for supporting me.
Yeah, let me hold, I'm going to, I'm going to hold up until I hear from the other, so I can make sure I can help.
Commissioner Harris?
I'm going to support you.
Thank you. Ooh, look, I got them supporting me, and Doug just left me on the call.
I'll let you out.
$1,000.
Kick you to the curb.
From?
From agency, that's all I got is agency.
Me, too, I'm running low.
Well, I got $2,400 designated right here. One, take it out of designated.
I can do a little low interest loan for y'all towards the end of the year.
I see. I'm over here rubbing on Rhonda, Rhonda.
I got $500.
Tell her, she can't take it with her, can she?
She can't take it with her.
I've got a year. I've got a year, I'm not leaving tomorrow.
That's what happened to lame ducks, though.
Y'all, y'all better watch out. Think I'm lame.
The next item to be considered during the formal session will be the bid award for the renovation of the Montgomery County Department of Human Resources building. Consider changing the pay range of a building security officer from pay grade AO3 to pay grade AO4, and consider travel training requests for the Board of Registrars, Community Corrections, the County Commission.
On the County Commission, I hadn't seen my name on there.
I think you were on the last one.
Am I?
For the Washington trip.
Yeah.
There was two people listed on the last one.
I, I don't, I think that's a separate travel.
I think Carmen was on it, and I think Dan was on it. That's great.
You've already put me in?
That was last meeting, yeah.
All right, I'm going to buy my own ticket. Well, you'll have to reimburse me.
Travel for the District Attorney, Engineering, Grants, Public Affairs, and the Sheriff. That's all the items to be considered during the formal session. We will hear from Ken Ward regarding item number one, future agenda item.
Well, good morning, everybody. The future agenda item that we have is a request for the commission to approve the Public Affairs Department to apply for the leader, the Innovate Alabama Network designation, and then also, in addition to that, the supplemental grant through Innovate Alabama. Innovate Alabama is part of Governor Ivy and the state's plan to increase innovation throughout the state, and the Innovate Alabama Network is a network of resource that connects counties, municipalities, nonprofits, and higher education institutions across the state to foster innovation. This would allow us to not only use the Innovate Alabama Network designation on marketing materials and things of that nature, but will also connect us through the network to various different programs and, and projects and funding opportunities that Innovate Alabama offers, their network entities in the state. This is a pretty prestigious designation for the county, and we're requesting the commission's approval for this.
Yeah, there's no match or anything for this.
Yeah, there's no match. All right, thank y'all.
Next agenda.
We'll hear from Dr. Stewart with Friends of the Theater.
Thank you so much. It's always wonderful to sit in on the meetings and see how you reach out to the total county and the community. The Friends of the Theater will celebrate for the 10th time, this is our 10th celebration of the Martin Luther King Holiday. This year, we will go back live to the Davis Theater, and we are, and we've invited gospel singer Tremaine Hawkins to be our special guest. She is known for the Hawkins family from Change to Going Up Yonder, Oh Happy Day, and not to just perform for us, but this time, we're having her to interact and train children. The schools, we're trying to get right now, the high school choirs from Selma, Lawrence County, Montgomery Public School System, they've already jumped on board because they were really excited. The central office really made me feel good when I called to say that Ms. Hawkins will spend three days training the children and giving them a chance to interact with her and, and see that gospel music is a classic. This year, we have our four groups of honorees. I'm not at liberty to tell you who they are because they're very close to you all, each of you, and I just want you to know that we're grateful for what you're doing here in the county. We're asking for at least $7,500 for this event going live, needing more security, needing so many things that we didn't have to have when we were taking the presentation virtually. WSFA is still going to work with us, so as we present our presentation on January 19th at 10 o'clock for seniors, senior citizens, and the schools, and as we present at 7 o'clock at night in the Davis Theater for the general public and our honorees, it will be aired for an hour for the public to see, for those persons who still feel uncomfortable outside. That is my presentation, I just want you to know, again, I love doing this, I don't get paid for it, but I get the joy of knowing that we are pulling together as a community. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
And the donations that go to the Friends, Friends?
I didn't hear you.
The donations that go to the Friends of the Theater.
Will go to the Friends of the Theater, 501(c)(3) organization that's been in existence for 28 years, and has always been geared, you know, that toward the children. I think all of you, all of you agree with that.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Always quality programming.
Thank you.
I'm going to do $3,000 on that from my agency, so get the other four from the rest of us, hopefully.
I'll do $2,000 from agency as well.
I'll do, I'll do $1,000 from agency.
And $1,500 from donated.
That should cover it, shouldn't it? That's a little bit more.
No, I think that was, it was $7,500 was the ask.
See, three, and how much did Carmen?
$1,000.
It was $7,500.
It was four.
Added up to $7,500.
Okay.
And I gave two, and Isaiah gave $1,500.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. Laurie Will, President of the Museum of Fine Arts, and Vice President Bill Ford.
We are here today to thank you. We're not here to ask you for any money. I'm the President of the Board, and Bill Ford is the Vice President of the Board, and we wanted to come and thank you for providing half of the funding that the city gives to the museum, and it's the combination of public funds and private funds that enable the museum to do what it does so well, so we cannot do it without your help. As you know, the museum is located in the Blunt Cultural Park, and it's open and free to the public six days a week. The museum also, as you know, has a history of partnering with the Montgomery Public Schools and the surrounding school community. There was a hiatus for tours to the museum during COVID, and then there were transportation issues, but we're glad to say that the museum is once again hosting all fourth-grade Montgomery Public School students for a tour program. The museum stretches public dollars and private dollars through its intergenerational learning and, and its partnerships. I hope you all have seen the artworks interactive gallery, which is for visitors of all ages, where community and student art are displayed. There are three galleries, two indoors, one outdoors, and also, we have added a visitor's service staff, which is doing a great job of making the museum a welcoming place for everyone who comes through the doors, and the visitor services staff put on several of signature events for all ages during the year.
MMFA has a history of supporting local artists, of which I am one, and MMFA has a history of strong partnerships in the community and the museum field. Those partnerships expand the impact of public and private source dollars, partners like the Montgomery Zoo, the Alabama Shakespeare Festival, and the Capri Theater, and also Culture City, which is partners with the MMFA to assist those serving, serving those with autism, including our Art for Autism event. The John and Joyce Cadell Sculpture Garden, completed in 2018, has been transformative to learning at the museum. As you might glean, by being outdoors, it was able to serve the public even at the height of the pandemic, so that was a fortunate addition to the museum. I'm reminded of my own personal story with the museum. First time I came to the museum, over half, half a century ago, I came with my father, who was an art teacher, and he wanted me to experience the museum experience. We went to the museum when it was the library and museum combined, and as you might imagine, it was not a particularly fond experience for me, because that was in the early 60s. I remember feeling alienated, but it's, it never ceases to be a source of amazement to me that almost 50 years later, my murals appear in the lobby of that library, and I now am stated to become the President of the Board of Directors at the museum. So it speaks to the transformative nature and revolutionary nature of art, and that's why I am so pleased to be involved with the museum, and I've always felt that it was a resource for every citizen in Montgomery, regardless of race, creed, color, because it's funded through your help and through the, through the city of Montgomery and our tax dollars. With the pandemic, we had the Flint Festival, which had over 1,600 people attend, and it was a 70% increase over 2022. Our Juneteenth Festival that we started, unfortunately, it kind of conflicts with the city's event, so the, the crowd was kind of small, but enthusiastic, but our Fall Festival attracted over 2,500 people. So the museum continues to outreach to the community to make sure that everybody can experience the museum.
The, so this is really exciting. I don't know if you have the time or inclination, but if you have your cell phones, I want you to go to the App Store and type in Bloomberg Connects.
Say that again?
Bloomberg Connects, and everyone in the audience, you might want to try this, because this is really exciting.
You're going to have to spell that for me now.
Okay. B as in boy, L-O-O-M, B as in boy, E-R-G as in go, Bloomberg Connects.
And it's probably initiated by the billionaire Michael Bloomberg?
It is, and we were able to get on this app, and so if you, if you have gotten on the app, you'll see something that says all categories, and we were one of the first on this app, but now you've got to stroll, you've got to scroll through a lot to get down to the MMFA box. You click that on, and you can start a tour of the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts from anywhere in the world and, and see our campus, see our collection, read about all of the great things that we do, and this is just hugely exciting. There you go. The Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts has always been on the map in terms of our collection and in the things that we do for the community, and now we can really show it off. And the museum is receiving national recognition and strengthening of our efforts, and again, the monies you provide enable us to have staff that can win these grant awards. Art Bridges is a project that was started by Alice Walton of the Walmart Walton family who built Crystal Bridges, and she's set up a huge fund to recognize the efforts of museums to provide more access to people who have trouble gaining access. So recently, the museum was given an award by Art Bridges of $280,000 for the next two years, and it will, and it's intended to remove barriers to community engagement, and it's going to allow us to form new partnerships and offer classes, camps, and tours free of charge. With this grant, we're going to be able to expand school tours to at least two other grades of Montgomery Public School students, and we are ecstatic about that.
Ms. Will, I want to make sure we have time for the commissioner to ask you questions. Does anybody have any questions? I apologize for interrupting you, but I want to make sure we have time for questions. I know Commissioner Harris has been very involved in the museum as a supporter, so.
You know, not a question, but I just want to, well, full disclosure, Dr. Will is a dear friend, and Bill is a friend, is a dear friend of a friend and a friend, and I am a friend of both the museum and the Shakespeare. And I am a friend of both the museum and the Shakespeare Theater. Montgomery is really fortunate to have such a complex and such a city of our size. We have a first-class, world-recognized museum on those premises. And we have the Shakespeare Festival that's the envy of the entire country. So it's a no-brainer for us as county commissioners, whenever budget time comes around, to fulfill our commitment to the museum and to that complex entirely. And I hope going forward, that's going to be the sentiment. I thank you, Laurie, for everything and all that you do. People just don't know the things that you are involved in that are so beneficiary, beneficiary to this community. For years, for a couple of years, she served as the Chair of the Shakespeare Board of Directors. And that was, under her administration, we, we were able to attract, I think, the most talented artistic director in the world, in Rick Dildine. And we still have him and his assistant, and Taj Schultz. So thank you for all that you do. Bill, welcome aboard. You, you, I think, Laurie, that's a great addition to that board. I know he is, he is an artist from his toes to his, to the tips of his dreads. You know, that's, that's, that's him. He speaks art, he lives it, and he dreams it. So I just want to say thank you. Know that I will support your efforts.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Harris.
I'd like to toss in that the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts was the first museum of fine art in the state, and it was started by artists. So that, that still resonates today.
Yes, and collectors.
And collectors, that's right.
Do I have a moment just to?
Just real quick.
Okay, thank you. It is quick. The other thing we want to brag about is that we received a multi-year grant of about a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, IMLS. This is a federal agency, doesn't give out a lot of grants. But this was given to us because we wanted to expand our efforts at welcoming the entire community, increasing diversity and inclusion in our collections, in our events, and in our programming and exhibitions. So again, we're able to come and brag to you today because of your support.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
We have two other items, future agenda items to consider. Kendall is going to speak to item number two, hiring a recreation aide at an irregular step.
Good morning. This recreation aide is, will be currently, will be replacing a recreation aide that was down at our Montgomery Activity Center down in South Montgomery. This recreation aide is, is familiar with the population that is down there. She is familiar with the activities that are down there. And this, in the grand scheme of things, this is only a temporary worker, so she will only work half of the time. And Mr. Williams is very high on her, and he believes she'll do a great job to not only maintain the activities that are down there, but to advance them. And, you know, the two, the two-step irregular increase is really minimal when you look at the memo. And so we would recommend that this be done. And based on the timeline for getting things approved and as well as then coming back, them going through personnel, we would really like to get this person started as soon as possible. So we would like to have rules waived on this to move this along.
Yeah, currently, Director Williams and Coach Payne are having to go down there every day.
Yes.
Open it up themselves and sit there, because we have multiple activities in the mornings, from the fitness center being open to the gym, to the dance classes, arts and crafts, dominoes, Bible studies, different things. So this would free them up not to have to do that every day like they've been doing. So that's the reason for the waived rules, because if we don't waive rules, it'll be two more weeks where we vote on and then another week for city-county personnel to approve. So now we're into the holiday time, and we need somebody in there, especially around Christmas.
I have no objection.
I have no objection. I think we need to waive rules. We definitely need to have someone down there right now.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
The third item to be considered today is the establishment and allocation of a plant maintenance manager in the jail. That would be at a pay grade A-ten and the related position fill request. The jail, as you all know, operates twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and is subject to some pretty extreme wear and tear with all the work that's being done presently, has been done recently. We think it's very important to have an individual with full responsibility for maintenance and repairs of those buildings. The sheriff is, supports this.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, the first I seen or heard of this was when I got the Thursday memo. I'd like to have a little more time to, to discuss this position and get a better understanding of what, what's all is going to be involved. It's, it's a big position that pays up to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And it's just not clear to me what this person is going to be doing, and I'd like to get a better understanding of it. So if we would just put it over.
Yeah, let's put it off for a couple more weeks. Can we do that, Florence?
Certainly.
Sheriff, is that gonna be any issue? What, tell me about delaying it for a couple more weeks, get some more information? Nothing critical? Okay. Let's, we'll talk about it in two weeks. Let's try to get some more information between now and then to all the commissioners. Anything else, Florence? Is that it?
That's it. One of the items to be considered in the formal session is the next year's County Commission meeting calendar.
Oh, yeah.
I put.
Did we work that out?
Put a copy at each of your places to show what conferences there are and to see if there are changes you want made.
I thought we talked about changing March fifth and November fifth.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Right, we will change the March fifth meeting to March fourth. And the November meeting from March fifth to, I mean, I'm sorry, November fifth to November fourth.
And there were a couple other days, wasn't there? Robbie, did you have?
Well, I had, I had proposed the July second meeting to July ninth, or change the July meetings to nine and twenty-three versus two and sixteen. Well, a lot of people, a lot of people are out of town that week.
And what, what about Labor Day? Was there something about that?
We, we almost always meet the, the Tuesday after, after Labor Day, because, yeah.
I wouldn't want to change that.
We don't normally change that.
I have no problems with July, we change in the July the fourth.
So what's the thirteenth of November? Why is it blue?
That's the organizational meeting.
So, so we're not, we're not voting on this today then?
It's on it, it's on it.
It is, and it will be voted on with, with these changes. With the change for the July fourth meeting to July ninth, packets will go out either, well, Wednesday before the Fourth of July.
So I'm, I guess I'm missing the new calendar. Do we have that?
No, it's just.
This is still the old one.
Just marking off the old one, okay. And we are voting on that today.
I see, I see a note here in August about ACCA.
Right, that's just to show you when those conferences are.
It starts on the twenty-second or the twentieth?
No, it starts in the afternoon of the twentieth.
Yeah, we normally leave after this meeting, and then there's a, really shouldn't be a conflict.
Well, if anything come up, we can work it. I can't see anything else.
So are we gonna put July the ninth and the sixteenth for July?
What I got there?
Right?
The ninth and the twenty-third.
Why can't we do this ninth and the sixteenth? Back-to-back. Let's just work all week.
Well, the sixteenth is the last day of NACO, if I goes to that.
Yeah.
Who's going?
I don't know. Well, if we move, well, if we move to the twenty-third, you still have another week before, it keeps two weeks apart.
I like nine-twenty-three, nine and twenty-third.
You know, and if I'm the only one that's suggesting moving it away from the week of July fourth.
Oh, no, you're, you're not the only one. I didn't tell you that.
Don't, don't hit, yeah, okay. I was just confirming.
But you're not the only one. I'm, I'm with you.
I see Dan's with you. I'm not. Let's work on the Fourth of July.
Twenty-third works better for you, Sheriff?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I voted. All right.
All right. That's all that we had to be discussed.
Haven't got it done this here a little long time.
Does the Commissioner have anything they want to discuss today while we're here?
Ms. Chairman, I, I see some of our citizens here that were presented a, proposed to us a couple of weeks ago regarding the Aircraft Mechanic and Maintenance Program at Danley. I was just curious. I wanted to know just how far we're along with that program? And is the hangar actually available for touring, for us to come out and look at? Anything going on out there? You can, you can come up here if you'd like to.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In reference to the question that you asked, the hangar is available, the lease actually starts January first. We take possession of the hangar January first. One eighty-seven has been operating in that same hangar for several years now. They have another hangar that they are moving into. We were hoping to have it before now, but they have some things that they had to do. What, where we are right now is Avdyn Aero Services out of Maryland. They are moving here. They're not leaving their operation in Maryland. They work on Aircraft One, the President Airplane, along with a lot of other airlines. They have a thirty, twenty-one-year contract with American Airlines. They have a twenty-one-year contract with Delta Airlines, and they're bringing some of that business to Montgomery. And what we have learned is that any city that's growing will have an airport that, that's able to facilitate a lot of business. And what, I manage Holiday Inn in Hopeful, that's what I do. It is very difficult to deal with distressed passengers. We oftentimes have distressed passengers here in Montgomery. And, and my being the manager, I get the blunt of conversations with frustration of people that have places to be and things to do, but not being able to do it simply because a small issue with an airplane that could possibly take thirty minutes to, to repair, we don't have anybody here to do it. Now, with Avdyn coming to Montgomery, not only will we have twenty-four-hour mechanics on, on duty, we'll also begin to work towards some other things that Montgomery will need because we have, what is it, Amazon that's moving here. We also have FedEx that has a huge facility here. And we have this winery that's opening real, real soon, a national distribution center, which is five minutes from the airport. And the reason why I'm telling you this is because cargo is a big thing that enhances airports. And we in Montgomery, we have this right at our hands. And we're moving forward exponentially to make sure that Montgomery Airport is able to do some things to cause more planes. My understanding is that we only have, how many planes that land here?
Commercial aircraft, I think, like twelve landings a, a day.
Twelve landings a day. This, what we're doing now is going to double that instantly, simply because airlines that know that there's another airline that can fix an issue, they'll begin to come more frequently. So this is where we are. If you have any questions, the, the hangar is available.
What's the ask, Sam?
Sir, what's the ask? We're, right now, we're asking one-point-three million dollars. And that's going to be to move a lot of equipment to Montgomery. From the, well, we've already ordered quite a bit of equipment. And, but we got equipment coming from Maryland and Avdyn. And if you have not looked up Avdyn, I truly invite you to look up Avdyn, A-V-D-Y-N-E. And these people have been to Montgomery. They've, they've spent a whole lot of time here in Montgomery, so. And Wade Davis, the Executive Director of the airport, is one-hundred-and-ten percent behind what we're doing.
This is, this is, is this, have, have you had any conversation at all with the Chamber of Commerce or the city?
Yes, yes. And we have another conversation with them, I think tomorrow. I've talked to Shelby and Deb.
I guess what I'm getting at, this sounds like something that would fall under the purview of, of the economic development statutes where there should be some assistance from the state, the city, and the county.
We've also had conversations with the Department of Commerce, so we've had.
Feds. You talking, you talking about State Department or the Federal Department?
Federal.
Well, see, the, the, the state actually have money for economic development. This sounds like we're bringing a new, a new industry, a new company to Montgomery. And there is, there's, there is assistance available through the chamber, provided by statute through the state. It's, it's a, it's a partnership with the state, the city, and the county. We do it all the time. You, you, it's, it's, it's great that you came here and, and, and to talk to us about it and to educate us on what to expect. But normally, these types of situations don't originate at the, at the County Commission. They come down through the chamber. And they, we know then that they've done the background, the kind of background you're trying to give from there. They, they'll do that for, before it even gets to us and the ask is in. And they know how to tap the funds that are, that are available for companies that want to move to.
To Montgomery.
Yes. It sounds like something we need. I mean, I know the plans are.
Absolutely something that will enhance the city economically, because it's going to hire a lot of people. A, a whole lot of people will be hired, a lot of people is going to be moving here. And businesses are going to, I mean, be greatly enhanced by having the ability, especially when cargo is, is included. So, you know, as we move forward, our desire is for everybody, County Commission, the city, Chamber of Commerce, everybody to, to, to get involved with this because it's going to benefit everybody, and I think.
But what I'm saying, though, is a formal process for it.
Okay.
You, you'll never get one-point-three million dollars from this commission. You know, it just doesn't, that's not the way it works. It, 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 that, the money that we spend on economic development is, we are always participants in a joint effort. And, and, and the state has funds. If, if your, if your proposal qualifies, there are funds available to do what you want to do. We don't have one-point-three million dollars.
I understand that.
You know, but, but I support what you're doing and want to see it happen. And what I'm trying to do is to make sure you get that, get into that process. Too many times, businesses come to me after they've tried to start and they couldn't get any money, and they come to us at too late. When there, there is a process, there's a way to go about asking, presenting your plan and, and getting approval and getting the money.
Now.
And you've got the airport behind you, so.
The airport really ought to be here with you. I mean, the airport should be leading this charge through the chamber.
And I talked to Wade Davis yesterday, and he's going to give you a call. The FOB or FBO, whatever it is with the airport, they are here, and that's it. But to answer your question, you asked what was the need 1.3? And that 1.3 is not strictly from the chamber. We've presented this to the Chamber of Commerce, County Commission, not just from the County Commission, I'm sorry. But this conversation has been with, with the city council and the Chamber of Commerce. So, they're, everybody is on board. So, we're asking you to do what you can do, okay? That's all we are asking, because it's a collaborative effort.
Really should be coming as a joint venture through the chamber to us. And not, we appreciate you coming, like Commissioner said, and informing us, giving the information. But we're not in any position to make a decision, you know, to give something until we know. There should be a whole team, the airport really should be leading this charge. This should poss, could possibly be on our federal agenda going forward. So, but we appreciate y'all being here. And, and I will talk with Wade Davis and with the chamber. Sharon's here now.
I appreciate that.
And we'll, we'll see if we can't do something to help you.
We appreciate that.
Thank y'all.
Hey, thank you guys for your time. Thank each and every one of your commissioners for all that you do.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We're going to have about five minutes recess. We're going to start at 10 o'clock sharp, so five minutes, everybody back at 10 o'clock.